I'd like to call the meeting to order. Would you please stand and join with me in their pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business tonight is to approve or amend the agenda. Do we have any motions to amend the agenda?
I'd like to have the agenda amended for the purpose of pulling the JV wrestling coach position out of the consent agenda for a separate vote, just for a disclosure discussion. The person being recommended is my nephew, and I would rather abstain when it's time to vote. Thank you.
Could we have a motion to that effect? Matt, a second. Karen, any discussion? All in favor of pulling that? Any opposed? Thank you. Could I get a motion then to approve the agenda as amended? Tim, second. Jeremy, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. At this point, we have an opportunity for public comment. We do value public comment. We would remind all the people in the audience that this is a meeting held in public and not a public meeting. We would ask that a certain level of civility be maintained in your comments. At this point, do we have any comments from the public?
It's 688 Ontario 5. I'm from the Neighborhood Acting Company. MAC is an adult theater group that has given over $100,000 in scholarships to participating high school seniors. And this year, we're performing "It's a Wonderful Life" on Friday, November 21st, Saturday, November 22nd at 7:30, and November 23rd at 2:00 PM. And we'd like to thank Wayne Central and its staff for supporting MAC for the last 30 years. We'd like to give you guys a ticket to our show. And it's a complimentary ticket, and you can come to any one of the shows that you want. And we're always looking for new people to audition, and you don't have to know how to sing or dance. We'll take anybody. So, our new information will be coming out in August for our next show. So, I just want to give you guys all the tickets.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do you want to give him one?
I will. Do we have any other members of the public who wish to comment? If not, then we will turn to our student representative. Our student representative tonight is Gina Gudiderio, who is a member of the class of 2015. She's a member of the jazz band. She's a new member of the ski and snowboard club. And in the fall, when she's not in the halls of James A. Benaway High School, she can often be found out in a tree stand or in the woods, as she is an avid hunter. She overall has a grade point average of 95.106. Last year, she was inducted into the National Honors Society, and she is looking at SUNY Maritime, the University of Tampa, and Coastal Carolina to pursue marine biology as a course of study. Please welcome Gina to our board meeting.
There we go. Red Ribbon Week was a success this year. Everybody had a lot of fun. Everybody was dressing up on all the days. Best day was probably Halloween Day. Saw a lot more people dressing up this year than any other year. A lot of high school students during that week went over to the elementary school, and they talked to the elementary kids about healthy habits and good choices involving not doing drugs and stuff like that. And tomorrow, we are excited to be having vets coming into the school for Veterans Day. I believe one of them is actually a WWII vet, so that will be very exciting to hear from them. And there will also be a female vet. Senior Ball is going to be on the 14th, and we have a lot of seniors looking forward to that. I, myself, just got my senior ball dress. Took me a very long time to actually find one. Mary Poppins, that one, I have heard that Mary Poppins is starting to really start to kick off. I went and saw that at the Rochester Auditorium, so I'm very excited to see how the high school is going to interpret that. Allstate is happening this weekend for both band and chorus. I hear that we have quite a few people, I think there's around six in the band, I'm not sure about how many are in chorus, but it's very impressive to see our music department getting involved with that. Volleyball got really far this year, in sectionals. They got to the finals. Unfortunately, they did not win. However, we did get two girls get awards, and our team also won the sportsmanship award. Senior project is really starting to pick up for a lot of the seniors. And walking down the hallways, you can see seniors just starting to freak out a little bit, because now those other grades are really starting to count for it. But hopefully, I don't think anybody's going to do bad in their senior project. Everybody seems to be doing really well so far. And lastly, we want, or whole school, would like to give a special thank you to all of the staff in honor of the American Education Week, which is happening next week.
Thank you, Gina. You are welcome to stay as late as you want, or you're welcome to leave as early as you need to if you have homework to do. So, please don't feel that you have to stay, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you again for your report. Next on our agenda is board member comments or reports. Do we have any comments from board members?
First, I'd like to give kudos to Nikki Wilson, because we have, I found out today, it was brought to my attention from Greg, that she, conversation that I was able to have last year with Nikki about bringing local produce to our cafeterias is actually something that's happening this month, and with rave reviews, which is nice, because it's near and dear to my heart to keep stuff local. And she's able to do that using a brokerage warehouse right across 104 there, and I think it's nice. Kids are getting fresh stuff that comes from home. And the second one I wanted to bring up for conversation, it's been something I thought about for my two years so far. It's a tradition that board members who are on the board when they have a student graduate get to be present onstage or somewhere near the stage for their student walk-in stage at graduation. And in the past two years, almost two and a half, the amount of work that I've seen goes into this, I would like to have a conversation about past board members who have students that will be graduating, be extended that honor, I guess I would say, to be able to, just to recognize that, yes, we, you served on the board, you donated, you dedicated your time, and just that's something that, just a thank you for that. And I don't know where we, who we would talk to or what to do with that, but...
Well, one of the things we can do, the board can, this evening, make a decision if they'd like for us to put it on a future agenda for discussion. So, if there's consensus on that, we'd be happy to do that for you.
What is the feeling of the board? Is that a topic that you'd like to see on a, on a future agenda?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, we'll do that in one of our meetings coming up.
And Ron, when we do have that on, if we could have a list of all the seniors, so we can look through to see what past board members may have a child on there?
This year, Tom Nicholson's, I believe his boys are graduating. I'm not sure Deb's son graduated, and I don't know before the people I was on the board with, if they have students that are graduating. But I know Deb's got one coming up, Tom's got his now, and Jerry Champagne's got kids coming up that are going to be graduating soon, so...
And who knows if Jeremy will still be on the board when his kid's graduating?
I can promise you...
Be careful what you promise, Jeremy.
Maybe for the first two, but the new one, that's...
Okay, I have something.
Do we have other board member comments?
Yes. The Audit Committee would like to see a discussion regarding the filling of a deputy claims auditor position added to a future agenda.
What's the board's feeling on having that on a future agenda? Okay, we will see that it's on a future agenda. Any other board member comments? Pam?
I'd like to just say that I went to the Ontario Primary Grandparents' Day, extremely well-attended grandparents' day. Being a teacher myself, I remember how grandparents' day was in my district, and I was floored at the number of grandparents that came out. And a few tears from kids when Grandma and Grandpa had to leave, but they cried all the way back to their classrooms, but they did go to their classrooms. And I actually heard a couple grandparents talking to Bob, saying, "You know, my grandchild's going to be in Ontario Elementary next year. Do they do this too? So, Holly, get ready." But it was very, very nice.
Any other board member comments? I would just like to add to what Pam said. I also attended grandparents' day. It's the third time I've attended it. Twice before, I attended it as a grandparent. But attending as a school board member, you have a different perspective. Both times that I attended before, I drove up from Pennsylvania for the event. And so, I saw a lot of former Wayne students who were here for that event, people I haven't seen in a long time, but who had made the trip coming in. And I'd just like to commend Bob and his staff for all the work that they put into making that event. It seems that since then, every time I go to Tops, or I go to Subway, or I go anyplace in town, I run into a grandparent who compliments me on that day on how meaningful it was to their grandchild. So, Bob, we thank you very much for all the work that you and your staff put into making that day so special for the kids. Thank you. Any other board member comments? If not, I'd like to introduce our guests tonight. We have people here who are going to lead us through probably the most important event we have this year, and that is the selection process for our new superintendent. So, I'd like to introduce Scott Bishoping, who is the superintendent of Wayne Finger Lakes BOCES, and Marla Iverson, who has worked with this board before. So, Scott and Marla.
Good evening, and thanks for having us. It's nice to see you again. We wanted to get back and meet with you and go through the schedule, the plan for hiring your next superintendent. And again, just as Ron said, this is likely not one of the things, most important things that you'll do this year, but likely one of the most important things you'll do as a board member. And I know, I expect that we'll have much success. We recently finished, or hopefully, finished the North Rose Walcott Superintendent Search Process. They will appoint their new superintendent on November 18th. And so, that's been a very good process for them. We expect to have the same process with you. But important to go through the schedule to make sure that we're all on the same page. And again, the one thing I wanted to make sure that we talked about beforehand is that you know that this is your process. We're here as your facilitators. And so, this isn't our process. This is a schedule that we put together that we've used in other districts. But again, if you would like something different, some other piece, we would be glad to do We also want to make sure that, remind you of the costs of this. Because you are part of the BOCES, this is a service that's a part of the BOCES, so your district is not charged separately for this service. The only thing that you'll be, that will cost you is for any out-of-pocket expenses, any kind of costs for food, or advertising, or things that you might have as a result of interview processes and things like that. And then, important as we go through and go into the process, to know that this is confidential in terms of our work with candidates through to the point of finalists. And that's something that we emphasize with candidates, simply because a lot of people that would be interested in these positions are working presently in other districts. And while they may tell their immediate supervisor, they don't necessarily want to announce that to their entire staff that work for them unless they know they're going to be finalists, and that's the typical process. So, just to run through, we've already met, and you've appointed us as your search consultants, so we're down to number four, and that is reviewing data information. What we will do is work, Shannon Marshall from our BOCES will work with your public information resources, as well as the district, to come up with the kinds of things that you would like to put in a brochure to advertise for that position. Typically, that's things about the district that make you different, or that are unique to your district. You have a wonderful reputation in terms of academics, extracurriculars, and those are the kinds of things we'd like to highlight in any kind of advertisements to potential From there, we put, we'll put together the brochure, we'll work with your public information coordinator to put together a brochure to send out. We plan on, on December 10th, distributing information to, and given your approval, because there's a cost to NISBA, the School Boards Association, and NISCUS, which is the school superintendent's organization, we will, we will need your authority for that, but we would send out advertisements through them. In addition, I send out to my 36 colleague district superintendents all of that information. They disperse that throughout their districts, in their BOCES, and around the state. In addition to that, we send that to all the colleges, universities that have graduate programs in administration, so they send, they post that on their websites. We also send the information to consultants around the state and contiguous states, so that they can send that information as well. If you would like us to, we can have that advertised in the newspaper. We don't necessarily encourage or discourage that. We find that the most reliable sources for information about positions like this are through the superintendent's organization and through the, through NISBA, partly because, or the main reason is because other organizations pull from their website and to notify potential One of the things that we'll do during the process, and sort of going back to number two, because it's something that Marla started working on already with Shannon, and will be working on over the course of the next couple months, is gathering information from your community. So, Marla, if you want to share how that would be.
What I'm going to ask you to pass around is a draft copy of a survey that will get basically requirements from your stakeholders as to what they would like to see in the superintendent candidate. We will be using this survey both in its paper form and electronically, and we had numerous groups put paper copies in different locations at North Rose, for example, the public library, to try to be sure that there's equitable access to the opportunity to give input. The software that we use allows this data to be collated, and so you can put it in bar graph forms, and you'll see, you know, what the primary characteristics, et cetera, will come out to be. We then gather this data and feedback from the stakeholders that are involved to take to your discussions about the candidate. And so, what will happen is we'll be asking you to constantly go back to the data and see the input, so that it's a data-driven participatory process. We will, though, continue to remind all stakeholders and you that the decision in this process lies ultimately with the board, but that you will be consulting the feedback that you've gotten in this survey. What we'll do then is collect the paper surveys and have Scott's secretary put that into the electronic thing, so that when you get your collated data, it will include any paper surveys. We will also facilitate some group discussions, which you'll see coming up, where focus groups can be held of any of the stakeholders that you choose. And we can also assist the different stakeholders in the creation of interview questions, and so they will have an opportunity. At North Rose, we had students developing questions right through to community members and all stakeholders in between, so that they could pick the questions that were most relevant to what they do. Scott, the survey goes up on, did we decide a date?
We would like to have the survey up on, by December 1st. So, again, part of that is your approval, or if you'd like to see anything additional or anything changed in terms of that. And there are very few questions there, but it's really about getting at what kinds of qualities that your, all the residents, or your school district in general, would like to see you take a look at for the next superintendent.
And we'll look to you for help in getting the word out that the, that there is a survey, both paper copies and the digital survey, so that the stakeholders know to go and seek it out.
Any questions about that part of the process?
And encouraging people to do the search. What's worked in some of the other districts?
I was just going to say, to do the survey?
Yeah, go ahead. If you had, you were going to say.
We can, your newsletter, your board, if you have a board communication that goes out on your own website, if you have a PTO, PTA group, you can announce it to them. You can ask anyone. I know at North Rose, one of the board members is connected to the public library. I don't remember if she was a board member or whatever, but she appealed to people through the library network to check it out. Students can be also made aware through either an announcement in their building or something on the website particularly for students.
The other thing we can have you do is distribute a press release, so that the local newspapers pick that up. That can be encouraging for people to do as well.
We have seen too, in the past, that people will use a local merchandise or a Penny Saver, if you have one, to announce, to check it out.
One of the things, you know Amy Gebhardt's in the back there, we've already had conversation about making sure that she is supportive of BOCES, so many of the things that you just talked about. And she may have already pulled a previous pamphlet, right? We're starting to pull some stuff together for you guys to be ready to go, so that's a connection that we'll have. And, you know, Mr. John Smith's in the back, that we may knock on his library door as well, Town Supervisor from Ontario. But, so, one other question I thought might be helpful for the board, is when you talk about your areas of advertisement, maybe you can give them some idea, because I know sometimes a lot of people think it has to be in the New York Times, it has to be, you know, advertised all over. What type of response you've been getting at some of your other searches using, using the areas that you've suggested?
You know, response is really based on the district and the characteristics of that. We aim for somewhere around 15 to 20 candidates that's comparable to searches, whether it's in Monroe County, or whether it's around here. Most recent searches, that have been full searches, that we hit in that number with Dundee, which was last year, which, with Williamson, which was shortly before that, and then with North Rose, most recently, we had 23 applicants. We're pretty pleased with the response. I would say that most of the response comes through the Council School Superintendent's website and word of mouth. That's why we get it out to all of the district superintendents. They then, if another district superintendent sends that information to me, I send that on to superintendents. John's gotten that information from me, and then he can pass that on if there are people within the district that would be interested in a position such as this. And that's really how a lot of that information is distributed. But again, you're probably looking for 15 to 20 good quality candidates. Would be a good turnout for a search. It's not like it was in terms of the numbers of candidates for these kinds of positions, simply because of the change in, in the level of expectations.
Scott, I just have a question. Clear this up for me. You're going to try to get the survey up on websites and things like that for the community, and you're asking the community for the top five factors, or, you know, any of the stakeholders. But then, don't you need, you know, let's just say that there's five that keep coming to the top on this, wouldn't that need to be present for the job application description? Must have this, must, you know, if they all check, not that you need to be, have a doctorate, but let's say that they all checked, I want to have the doctorate, then wouldn't that necessarily correlate with what you need for the job description and minimum requirements? And I don't understand if you're going to have your initiate application in the brochures prior to getting some of this data of what we're looking for back?
The reason for the survey data, because that's a good question, Carol. The reason for the survey data is really to inform you when you go to determine who you want to interview. So, it's really not going to, you would, a lot of that information is specific enough that if you started plugging those things into your requirements, you would really shrink your pool beyond where you'd want, want it to be.
Okay.
So, again, you're looking at those where, are those some, are there areas there? Are there skills, abilities there that would be, are the kinds of things that you'd want to look at for the candidates that you're going to interview in the first round? And that, we will have that information available for you long before you do those interviews.
Okay, thank you.
After we post a position on the 10th, we'll begin, we'll try to fit in times with your principals over the course of the next month, that we can come in and talk to your staff about the process. We'll share the schedule, we'll share how staff members can participate in, once you've given us the go-ahead on this kind of format and this kind of schedule. But we want to get in, we want to be able to answer any questions, dispel any rumors, which is really part of the process, to clarify and make sure that everybody knows what the purpose of the process is, and what people can take part in, and how they're going to do that. The biggest part of that is really to ensure that everybody knows that it's your decision. That the reason for interviewing, as opposed to some other interviewing processes, isn't going to be, when we get down to constituent level, isn't going to be to decide and to tell you who they think you should pick. It's going to be to tell you, or to provide you information about the candidates based on their interview. And if you have three finalists, it would be providing information on three separate people, not, "I think you should pick number one." And that's, that's a big difference for a lot of people, because a lot of times, they're in position to say, "We want to compare and be able to tell you." That's a natural thing. So, it's something that we try to say very often, as far as what the process is, and to make sure everybody knows that the only people that are going to be choosing the next superintendent are the board, the members of the board. I'll check in sometime, hopefully, early January, just to make sure that you're clear on how things are going, inform you if we have some updates on the process, if there's been feedback. Usually, like turning in papers for school, there's not a rush at the start. It usually happens towards the end. But we do have a lot of people turn in. Part of the reason we're, we're doing a longer search process, or a longer application process, because this is, if you look at the dates, going from December 10th through February 3rd, that is a little longer than usual, but part of that is because of the holiday season. We wanted to include the holiday season, because sometimes that's a period of time where potential candidates can have some time to get their stuff together. At the same time, we know that that can also impinge on people's opportunities because of travel or something along that line. So, we timed it with the end, as though you were starting the process January 1st, but we wanted to open it up a little bit earlier, just to give potential candidates that timeframe. We will close on February 3rd. In between that time, as candidates submit their materials, I'll start scheduling interviews with them, and either Marla or I, or both of us, will interview each candidate, either on the phone, if they live a distance away, or in person. We prefer in person. And what we do... And what we do is a very short interview, 20 to 30 minutes. And all we're trying to do is try to fill in some of the gaps from what we see on their resume cover letter, all of their information, so that when we come and share that information with you, if you have questions, maybe we've heard that answer in that interview we've done or to provide you with more information. Again, when we get to that point, and I'll talk about that a little bit later, but we're really sharing information with you at that time and that's all. On, so on February 5th, we will, I'll meet with you again in executive session and talk with you at that point in time about contract terms. What we like to do is long ahead of time, work with your attorney so that they can put the contract terms, the draft contract terms together, so that by the time you hit finalists, that's all ready to go. It shortens the process from the point that you offer a position to the point where there's acceptance because we would want it to happen the very next day, but attorneys, they have other business to do and so it's not at the same priority level at that point in time. So we try to shrink that, the work in that process that you aren't developing it after the point of hiring. On the 10th, we will bring all the materials from the applicants as well as from the interviews that we do and we'll meet with you and that will be a roll up your sleeves and go through the material, go through the information for you to work that candidate pool down to a number that you would like to interview. We recommend around six. That could mean seven, that could mean eight, that could mean five. It's, the six is just a target number, but it's really the level that you see that you would like to, there are candidates that meet the requirements that you would like to see and hear more from. At the same time, we'll bring a set of interview questions for you to look through, see if you like those or if there's others that you like, so you can put together a set of interview questions for that first round. The first round of questions is on the back page. It's on the 24th, 25th, and 26th of February. And we'll plan out whatever time we need. If you have more than six candidates, we'll have to, we'll be doing three interviews in at least one of the nights, if not two. If we have, if there's less than nine candidates, then we'll plan the last night for two candidates and then have some time to discuss after that to see if you, or to work to select your three finalists. And as I tell boards, that night you don't have to be perfect. You just have to pick the three candidates that you'd like people to see. You have to be perfect a couple of weeks later when you're picking the finalists. So we work on just making sure that you're looking at, Marla does a nice job of facilitating that process of you looking at the input that you've gotten from your community and from your resources and the qualities that those candidates bring forth in the interviews as well as all their application materials for you to make the decision of who you'd like to have be final.
Scott?
Yes?
When we do these questions, are those questions provided to candidates ahead of time or are they asked at the meeting?
No, we typically don't provide them ahead of time, but again, that's up to you. If you have some questions, it may not be your full set of questions, but if you had, say, two or three of the group that you wanted people to know or prepare for ahead of time, you could do that as well. We'd talk about that that night as we're putting the questions together. And again, that's your decision, how you want to do that.
Thank you.
When we, when do we start discussing salaries and stuff like that? I mean, do we do that, you know, in the advertising or?
Yeah, there's a good question, Dennis. One of the things I was going to pose to you is that, some homework that you have to do is really to decide what you want to put together as a salary. And so that can be done in a couple of different ways when you post that. It can be done as a range from a certain amount to up to a certain amount. It can be done where it's strictly up to a certain amount or you can use the terminology competitive. You don't have to put a number in there. For most of the searches in this area, in our region, there's, it's usually an amount, a range, or up to listing an amount. That's typically how it's done. But again, that's entirely up to you. We have some information that we're getting updated and I can send to you about with current salaries for the superintendents in that region, in the region. So you have that information, you can make that decision. And I can plug in some recommendations of how it would look. You pick the numbers and I'll just show you how it, how it might look in an advertisement sort of scenario. I would have that tonight, but we're not finished collecting that information. We're, each fall, we pull that information together. So we'll see if we can get that very soon for you.
And that also would include the benefit package?
Typically, you wouldn't put that in your advertisement, the specifics of the benefit package. You might use a wording that's more general, like a competitive benefit package or something along those lines, but we typically, you don't usually list the specific benefits. What we would have though, and the reason I would be meeting with you in early February is to come up with what you as a board would want to have in your contract, in your draft contract to offer to the finalist as a benefit package. And then what we would do is for all of the finalists, as long as the attorney has that draft ready, we would deliver that draft contract to each of the finalists before they even interviewed, so that if they had a significant issue with the draft, they could, we would know that before they even entered into that finalist scenario. That's the goal. So in between that time, we'll be asking you to gather representatives of the areas, different constituent groups within your district. We would suggest that you would have two or three different groups of teaching staff broken down by grade level. That's entirely up to you, but we can provide recommendations as far as how that would look, if you would like that from us. We would suggest having an administrative team, a student team, a community group of representatives, as well as a support staff group. And so probably in the range of six or seven interview teams that on that finalist day, that they would each separately meet with the candidate so that they could each separately come up with information for you to help inform your decision on that day that you have to be perfect.
Do you have a process you recommend for putting together the constituent groups or is that up to us to?
Ultimately, it's up to you. There's a couple of different ways that folks do that. One is through, as far as community groups, we always recommend that if there's an active PTA or PTSA or PTO, I'm not sure of your acronym, but that you invite leaders in that group to be part of it. You want to make sure that you have some parents and if that's the means of representation, you'd like to have, if there are community leaders and Supervisor Smith is here, so you may want to tap him or somebody else that's in that.
Don't leave yet, John.
But it's always good to have community leaders as part of that group and then folks from the business sector in that community group. So you try to have an assortment. That's the same with all of your groups. So if you have an elementary teachers group, you wouldn't want to have all first grade teachers. You would want to have a assortment of throughout each, representing each group. Same with support staff, you'd want to have someone from transportation, maintenance, all of those areas. So we recommend often is that you would send out information seeking volunteers, knowing that you're going to, the board is going to be selecting for the basis of make, ensuring that there's appropriate participation and representation across all areas. That's really your goal in this case, is to have as much representation as possible. As far as choosing students, some districts have used counselors to select, some of the principals have selected. What we often encourage is not to have, while it's great to have National Honor Society represented, it's not always great to have just National Honor Society represented or Student Council. It's good to have an assortment of representation of your student body as well. We will, we will send you, we've developed some draft communications and so you don't have to start with a blank sheet of paper. We'll send you some draft communications to send out, that you can use, that you can adjust however you want to do that in terms of those, trying to recruit people for those committees. We'll also be recommending participation as we go out to meet with your staff at the various buildings. We will, we'll meet with whoever you want us to meet with, whether it's the maintenance folks or the high school staff or any group, regardless of, we'll do as many meetings as you'd like us to. On the 3rd of March, we have planned an afternoon where once we have those committees set, we'll meet with them. We'll need a large location like a library or cafeteria and we'll talk about developing questions, going through the process of each of those constituent groups developing questions. We'll, at that point, we'll have a schedule for how the day will go. Likely it will start around eight in the morning for the candidate and it won't end until later at night after you finish up with an interview. It'll be a long day because we'll want to involve a quick tour of each of the buildings that we can get the candidate to as well as the interviews from all of those groups. So we'll pack that all into about a 12-hour day.
So does that go through? Do you break it down?
For each one individually?
Yes, we'll do three separate days.
Okay, so, okay.
Yeah, you, when you're getting to that point, you really want to get an idea of that candidate.
Right, by itself, right, united, yeah, which is what I wanted to make sure we were doing.
Yeah. Again, this is your process. If you say, we'd like to do it differently?
No, no.
We'll do it differently.
Go along with it.
So please know that when I say this, those things and I, it's really, these are what we've done and what we've seen be successful, not just in this area, but for other district superintendents around the state have used this sort of process. Hopefully on, by the last day, you'll be ready to select a candidate. What we will do is from all the constituent groups, we give them a feedback form. We ask them individually to fill out that form. So you will be getting, if there are 60 interviewers throughout the day, you'll be getting 60 separate pieces of information, not collective information, but 60 separate pieces of information and we'll review that with you. We will try to collate as much as we can, but there's also, we'll have that available for you to discuss. And you can use that as you will. One of the things you will never hear us do is advise you on who you should choose. We will never do that. We will provide information, but from us, we're, that's not our role. Our role is really to facilitate your decision, it's not to us. Although I have, we both have a stake, we want to have somebody be part of our team, so we'll want you to make the right decision as well. We'll be just like your community, we'll be saying, you better make that right decision, but we won't tell you who to pick. It's, you know your district best and it wouldn't be right for us to do anything other than bring you that information. Once you've selected a finalist, or if you need to, we have a period of time in there that if you wish to do a visit of the potential or that candidates, or if you have two candidates, you're trying to decide and you want to go and visit their current place of employment, we can set that up and you can have a team of the board or a representative group of the board go to visit if you so choose. Once you've made the decision, we'll have the contract ready to go and the person will already have that and then we'll have your representative work with the finalist candidate's representative to come to terms and then we have the celebration. Once you've agreed to terms, we can announce, and again, we have some draft information that we can provide and work with your public information officer, since these aren't typical kinds of processes, they, there's not usually a bank of previous releases of that sort. So we'll just advise and help out wherever we can. We have the start date of July 1 and that's our target with this. So we would like to make sure that we finish up and appoint in early April in case there's a 60 or a 90-day hold for that, for that candidate in their current role. And that 60 is more typical, sometimes you get folks with contracts where the release is 90 days.
So Scott, in a situation like we're in where we have an interim superintendent and we're trying to hire a new full-time superintendent, is it typical for them to sort of, is one guy's walking out the back door, the other guy's walking in the front door, or do they overlap at all to sort of share information?
That's a great question, Karen. Typically, there's some transition time, whether that's having the person start in. Most often, if a person has enough time in advance, they'll make some time. If they can't, then there's lots of times, the district will ask the interim to, if he can spend a couple of half-days or a few half-days, maybe.
I like the kind of walking out the back door.
Usually it's, usually there's a baton pass, not just passing in. But lots of times, and we would work with John on setting up some means of transitioning. If that means the person starts a little bit beforehand or if John, if you work with John on taking or spending some half-days or that sort of thing after the process to transition.
Scott, can I jump in with just?
Sure, please.
Two little pieces. We are guests in your house coming up, so we're gonna reach out to Kathy to help us with some room arrangements, et cetera, so you'll be our lifeline. And if you need anything back, please just push back in to Scott and to me so that we can look at cafeteria and stuff. We can also help the principals when it comes time for the building visits to understand what needs to be prepared for or not prepared for the visits, trying to manage the anxiety. The other thing that we've noticed along the ways with the searches is that tons and tons of questions emerge during the process. One of my favorites is the geography lesson because as we're going through the applications, everybody keeps saying, Scott, where's Gosin? Scott, where's Somerville? Scott, where's Skinny Atwood? And so as you, as you come up with questions, and sometimes they're questions that, they're pretty interesting, like is this a good number? Is this a big number? Is this, is this good enough? As they pop up, please ask and if we don't have the answer, we'll definitely get it for you. I can't tell you enough about how this is your process and we are here to serve you. So if the process needs a little tweaking or you want an extra focus group or a longer focus group or a bigger list of questions, we're here to do what you need because it is your process and we're humble guides. So please ask questions along the way. It's a long, it's a long and fun process, it's a very great bonding experience and you learn a lot about, even more about the district and about yourselves as a board as you go through the process. Any questions?
Other questions? I think I heard at least two decision points that you need from us. One is on the survey and the other is on the brochure. When do you need decisions on those, Scott?
As far as on the survey, we'll need that as soon as possible because we'd like to, we have a target date of December 1st. If you have that finished sooner, there's no delay in us having that up sooner. We have the draft ready, so if, that one is the quickest one.
This is the only meeting we have scheduled for this month. We do have a budget workshop scheduled for the 20th. Is that a decision we can make at that workshop?
Sure. We can always do a little board business at a workshop, kind of enter in and out and I think that'd be a good idea.
Okay.
And then the other piece is the salary range. And so that, if, what is the date of your December meeting?
20th.
The 20th?
November.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You said November 20th. It's our budget workshop this month. We do have a budget workshop meeting scheduled this month.
So if you, if it's possible to decide on that as well, we, like I said, we would like to distribute the information on the 10th if possible. So that's, we can prepare most everything else in that brochure ahead of time and just wait to hear that range.
Okay. Are there any other decision points you need from us tonight?
Not at this time. You'll have lots of decisions to make, but not tonight.
Not tonight. Let us off the hook for a while.
We, we would just like to encourage, because we always do, we, I mentioned about confidentiality. Confidentiality is about individuals. What I would always encourage boards to do is to talk about the process. You can talk about the process all that you want. So if somebody asks, you can share any of the information on, on this sheet as far as the schedule or anything else that we've talked about. That's really a lot of the times what people want to know about, how are you going about doing this? There will be times that people will want to know the who, but most importantly, people want to know the how and, and you can share that at any point in time you want.
Okay. Any other questions? Scott Marla, thank you so much for coming here tonight. Yes, watch for the deer. Our next order of business is superintendent reports.
Okay, thank you, Ron. We have, we have three reports. I'm gonna share a few staff, actually student recognitions. We'll ask town supervisor, you can start making your way up. Mr. Smith is going to talk to us a little bit about our lake level options. There's some legislation that's kind of on the horizon and we think it's an important conversation. And then Joe is gonna talk to us about special ed report. So we'll get started with just a couple of quick student recognitions. We'd like to recognize Gabby Sinelovic for all her hard work and commitment in bringing Sebastian Marondet, the lost boy from Sudan and founder of the non-for-profit organization Building Mines in Sudan, to our school to speak to 7th grade class. That was just recently. Last year Gabby collected school supplies, donated this, donated to this organization and this year she organized a fundraiser to help support Sebastian's dream of educating children in South Sudan. So congratulations to her. And also, Free Well Elementary School 5th grade student Isabella Verhaux took the initiative to help a local girl meet her goal of collecting 25,000 pairs of shoes to bring to Guatemala. Free Well students and staff joined Isabella in her mission and donated 446 pairs of shoes. So great initiative by Isabella, congratulations for that. And one last announcement you heard about from our student rep is American Education Week, November 16th through the 22nd coming up. We want to thank our Wayne Central School District staff, that's all staff members for the tremendous job and work that you've done. Your commitment and your caring is appreciated every day. So thank you so much for there. And I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Smith. Amy's gonna kind of get him locked in on his plan.
Depending on your intent, your purchasing officer either needs to be fired or given a raise based on the comfort of these chairs. So it all depends on what your intent was. They're absolutely remarkable. So, well anyways, thank you very much for having me tonight. I've got three things I'm gonna try to accomplish tonight, is give you a little overview of what this whole lake level thing is all about. Some of you may have been very educated to it, others something new or maybe just caught a blip in the newspaper. I'm gonna try to educate you to what it's about and why the county and the town and all the lake shore towns are opposed to this situation. So while I've, I've participated in this, I've not given this PowerPoint before, so let me, let me see how well I do. Regardless, the, we'll go into the history and a little bit about the proposed Plan 2014. The IJC is the International Joint Commission composed of Canadian and US representatives that determine basically the conditions of the lake and where it's headed in lake levels. As many of you are probably very familiar with, we've seen highs and lows and everything in between and nor'easter storms and damage. So years ago it was recognized that there needed to be some level of measurement to control the whole situation and that, that developed the IJC. The current plan is called 58DD. Before that, it was fairly unregulated, left to natural flows as you go along. They were up and down depending on time of year and water conditions from the upper Great Lakes as to what we had going on here. Plan 58DD was enacted to the present time, a little over 50 years. That measured the highs and lows of the lake water level through the entrance of water on the west and discharged it into the St. Lawrence on the east. It was always a plan to try to keep it somewhere within a four-foot range and even better if they could, depending on seasonal conditions. And these are the levels that they had set and are all above the sea level and they had different varying impacts of the Canadian side, the US side and the various communities along the way. It's worked very, very well for all these years. Well, the examination of this, as they looked at all the factors, they said, "We gotta change this. We're gonna look at this." So as you get into it and you go, "What the heck is going on?" Well, this is a recent, fairly recent picture of one of the upper limits where it's at for Sodas Point. And forgive me, this, this PowerPoint is a little bit scaled towards Sodas Point as kind of the poster child for the whole situation. And there's a bunch of data in here and I can supply this to you if you're so interested. But the Plan 2014, which is promulgated by the IJC, after 14 years of study, 14 years of study costing millions and millions and millions of dollars, is they're looking to revert the lake level and water discharge plan to what they say more natural highs and lows. Well, the problem with that, of course, is more natural highs mean flooding and more natural lows mean impacts to communities and recreation all along the watersheds that we have on the south shore of the community. It's based on that formula. If you can figure that out, then you belong on the commission. And I don't pretend to even begin to know about it. One of the things, in part and parcel of this process, the minority opinion, which is not in favor of this plan, engaged Dr. Frank Shirmamano of RIT, very well-recognized and accomplished engineer and a longstanding enthusiast of the lake and water levels and he's very, very educated into the whole process. His examination showed something entirely different. Water range level may be as high as 7 to 11 feet as opposed to what the IJC is saying is gonna occur with Plan 2014. So why Plan 2014? Primarily environmentally driven. That is their statement. They're saying that it's, this is, we want to improve the environment, the habitat of various critters, the black tern, the northern pike, the muskrats, meadow marshes. Well, it's good. I'm pleased and God knows we love muskrats and pikes and stuff. And they're thriving now through both empirical evidence and anecdotally. All of them seem to be very thriving well considering the situation we've had. The, so we're really kind of questioning, what's the motivation behind this? Some of us have, in fact, all of us in a coalition have looked at this to say, "We believe it's some financial motivation behind this" as opposed to a true environmental motive. That being, we believe hydropower is who benefits. And as part of this whole thing, they provided this wonderful little spaghetti graph and it shows new highs, new lows and then under the, or rather, old and under the new ones, higher highs and lower lows. I don't pretend to be an expert at studying the graphs and anybody can have it if they want. But it does know that these trigger levels in which the IJC would act are definitely changed. And the trigger levels are when they see something where we're at this level, we're gonna start taking action to mitigate it. The problem is, it takes a long time to change the lake level. So if they make an observation, they say, "Oh, it's here, now we gotta start lowering the level." It takes a long time to accomplish that or raise the level. It's not an instant thing. It takes quite a long time for that to occur. The unpredictable factor, of course, in the entire time is the weather and other impacts. You're kind of soothsaying a little bit as we go along. There's the issue. Here's just some historical reference. This is where Sodas Point was back a number of years ago when this was an acceptable level under Plan 2014. Some various pictures of there, low water, you do have some risk with the low water, increase of the blue-green algae, significant high toxins, shortened season for marinas and loss of revenue. That's been demonstrated quite a few times, even under our current plan. A significant issue for our watersheds. More groundings, increased dredging, major loss of tourism, decrease in tax revenue. Well, so we talk about finances, taxes, revenue, assessment. There's the meat and potatoes of the whole thing. And this whole thing with Plan 2014 and its promulgation to us and the United States and the Canadian governments for acceptance, money seems to be a big driving factor. We get that. It's an important part of the whole thing. For us, our concern is how would it affect Wayne County, Town of Ontario, Wayne Central and all the south shore communities. In Wayne County, a significant portion of our assessed value lies within and along the lake shore. Very significant portion of our assessed value. We believe anecdotally, we've already seen some little worrisome nudges of folks that have property along the lake going up for sale. Anecdotally, no proof whatsoever, just is trying to, maybe even seeing into it a little too much, but we're worried about that. If, in fact, the Plan 2014 is adopted, we will see a significant devaluation of the assessed value of these properties. And of course, reduced assessed value is a reduced ability to collect income on our taxable assessments. That affects the school district, the town, the counties and everybody who lives in the counties. This affects Monroe, Orleans, Niagara and Oswego Counties. The western frontier, Representative Chris Collins has been leading a very strong campaign on this the whole time. Let me get through this so I'm not missing anything. High water, couple of real important things there. In Sodas Point, it would absolutely shut down the water system. You have, because the wastewater collection sewers would be underwater. You have to shut off the water systems so that the higher elevations don't inundate and continue to plug. So Sodas Point would be basically shut down. Here are some other little goodies, but we, again, I can email this to anybody, you have it already, but. High water concerns, again, this is largely directed from a Sodas Point. Shoreline, higher insurance costs, IGA estimate of total damage. Now, this is, this is their estimate of total damage. $2.2 million. What they say, what they predict is what damage would occur. They're saying, they're telling you, there's gonna be damage. They're telling you that. But unfortunately, they didn't include any of the embayments, only the pure raw shoreline, none of the embayments, which of course are significantly valuable assets. So there-
Can I just ask?
Please.
That $2.2 million is per year, over 10 years? What's the timeframe?
Does not define a timeframe because it says, "We anticipate with a high water event, you could potentially have $2.2 million." So that, your next high water event, or maybe the one that's a little higher over that, it is not a cumulative factor.
Okay.
Good question. And please, if you have one, I'll try to do my best to answer it. All kinds of great little data of who gets what and who goes where. Hydropower is basically the biggest winner out of this whole thing from increased water flows. There is a concern there. Damage mitigation, okay. IJC took it right off the table. They say, "Well, it's not our concern. There's gonna be damage, but it's not our concern. You're gonna have to deal with that." So who pays for that? Federal government at this point says, "Hey, nothing to do with that." State is saying the same thing. So who gets stuck? The moment, the landowners and us. Those are some of the issues we have here.
John, do property owners on the lake, are they eligible for flood insurance?
Therein is the issue. Some properties are required if there's a mortgage on it depending on their elevation. Many of the properties are not because in Ontario in particular, because of the higher cliff type aspect that we have in town, they do not have to pay it. And one of the issues with flood insurance, as you may or may not be aware of, the change this year into an actuarial-based premium system for flood insurance has caused flood insurance premiums to absolutely skyrocket. The one best case I can give you here, local family purchased their home late last year knowing exactly what they would have to pay in flood insurance of a little over $1,000 a year. They knew it, budgeted for it, approved for it, it was great. They get their bill early this spring and it went up to nearly $7,000. So they had a choice of filling in their basement to negate the flood level or pay the premium. They can't afford the premium, can't really fill in the basement, so they're stuck and they may have to be forced out of their home. And it's just one that I'm very familiar with. So there is a concern along those lines.
I'm sorry.
So, yes, please.
So, under 58D, the lake was supposed to be within a certain range of four-foot range. Under the 2014 plan, there's a higher-
Higher highs and lower lows.
Higher highs and lower lows. So for the, right now, I'm kind of focused on the highs because of the property damage. The, people built their houses in the expectation that it would, the water would be kept below a certain level and then they're raising that level, but the people making the rules don't have any, what's the word I'm looking for?
They're not a stakeholder.
Saying it.
They, they don't bear any of the cost if, if there's damage.
Not at all. And why, in this whole thing as it was crafted through, again, 14 years this has been going on. The north shore on the Canadian provinces, they have no problem with this because they have no problem with flooding. They have no high water issue due to an elevation change. And what we are all familiar, if you live around here, that northerly wind that beats on the south shore, on even a mild day, you may have one to two foot of lake level difference between the south shore and the north shore. We've all seen the effects of what's going on whenever you get a nor'easter or any type of storm like that and the storm surge and then the waves. Therein is the situation that has not been carefully examined and looked at. Again, we live this here, particularly those people that have families that have cottages or your own perhaps, and you're absolutely right in that you have probably two entire generations that have invested in and built infrastructure based on what was known through an international treaty, 58DD, it's been in place prior to 1960. And those infrastructures, including the entire sewer infrastructure of the village of Sodas Point, that's what it was built on. And now we're gonna change the game, we're changing the rules all the way through it. There's incredible amounts of data and studies and opinions and, and I don't profess to know all the ins and outs particularly, but I'm, I'm well-versed in what we believe to be the impact with this whole situation. Just wanted to review and make sure I'm not missing anything. So regardless, we're, we're looking at it from a very serious standpoint. Our concern is, and I say "our," that would be the Coalition of Lake Shore Supervisors, the Wayne County Board of Supervisors as well. We've been actively trying to raise the awareness and work within the situation to oppose the plan. Plan has a lot of heavy endorsement, a lot of environmental groups are signed on to the plan. On the other side of the coin, we're getting, starting to get some traction with folks to look at it and understand. We do not believe it's a fair shape for the south shore of Ontario, Lake Ontario, and we're very concerned about these mitigating factors. The plan says there will be damage, no question about it. They, they admit it. And, and when we were talking with, during a live webinar with IJC members, they said, "Well, you just, you're gonna have to mitigate it, you're gonna have to put some riprap up and whatnot." Well, you don't riprap on entire Sodas Point and all the other embayments. Just doesn't work. And again, the embayments did not take sway in their study. They merely looked at the linear shoreline. There's a serious flaw in there. So the efforts that we've done, we've opposed it on the county and the town level as well as all the other towns. Monroe County has joined with Wayne County on this, is opposing the plan. Same thing with Orleans and Niagara County. All oppose the plans. We, on a local level, meaning the, the county, we have met with Representative from Senator Schumer's office. Senator Schumer has agreed to meet with us as well at some point in time. Senators, Senator Zolio and Representative Oakes have taken this on the local level. We've gone to Albany two weeks ago to meet, meet with the Deputy Secretary to, for- We've gone to Albany two weeks ago to meet with the Deputy Secretary to, for Interior and Environment with the Governor's Office and expressed our concerns there. On the federal level, we traveled to Washington last week and met with the State Department Representative for Affairs for Canada because the State Department, being an international treaty, has a lot of sway in the decision-making process. The Federal Department of Transportation has come out in opposition to the plan. They recognize it will impact shipping through the Great Lakes, and that is a very big concern of theirs. There is a building momentum of folks that are looking at this and realizing it's not a good deal for us, but it hasn't caught the public's attention. It's kind of a boring item. It doesn't have any real jazz to go along with it, and I get it. So that's why we're here, or I'm here, and we're out on this crusade to try to educate as many people as we can. So that's a big, huge thing in a small nutshell to try to keep everybody occupied without going crazy, and I'm not going to sit in this chair too long. But any questions that I can try to answer, and forgive me for having my back to you, but I had to pay attention to this too.
John, where are the hydroelectric plants that they want to do, or where are these that would be, are they all in Canada?
They're north, or correction, east and west. The Messina Cornwall area, if I've got my geography correctly, and the whole Welland Canal hydroelectric facilities on the west side. Yes.
John, would this have any impact on the water treatment plant for Ontario, the sewage treatment plant for Ontario, and Gannay?
Gannay is okay. It's one of the first things we checked. They had made upgrades two years ago into their intake system. Their biggest concern is they were dealing with ice in ordinary winter. So they went down, expanded, lowered their intake. They're okay. No worries about Gannay. For our own consideration, we do have one vulnerable areas where the sewer drains to where the boat launch is at Thompson Park. That is something we're a little concerned about. It's about two feet over flood stage, so a nor'easter puts us in a risky business with that pump house and that intake right there.
Okay.
Can you just tell me-
Go ahead, Karen.
The treaty is between who and who? The US government and the Canadian government, New York State and Ontario?
Nope. US government, Canadian government. It is an international treaty, and that's the establishment of the IJC, the International Joint Commission. In the decision-making process on the US side, it is a funny amalgam of people, as the Foreign Service Officer explained to us last week in Washington, very nicely so. And I must commend those people in the State Department, they really did their homework. They know the stakes, they know the players, they know the process. So, the White House has a strong influential position on where they want to go because it is an international treaty. The State Department forms a fully-formed opinion because that is their role as the State Department. They are very much influenced by the state of New York's cumulative decision, essentially the governor's decision, for obvious reasons. The governor really hasn't weighed in on this, and we expect some type of impact coming probably relatively soon, maybe by the first of the year. The, of great concern to the State Department was the DOT's opposition to the plan. That was a very big concern of theirs, and that weighs heavily in the whole process. So you have this, again, this amalgam of various agencies to have one eventual cohesive position, and of course, all the international implications between US and Canada. It is our hope that as they sort through the whole thing, they will realize there's very, very little benefit to achieve and a great deal of harm exposure.
Has anyone, John, looked at the effect on the Barge Canal? If the lake were to be three feet higher than it's now permitted?
I don't believe so. I don't think that was ever discussed.
I mean, that would seem to me that would have a tremendous reverse effect on the Barge Canal.
I would suspect to, but I don't think we have, to be honest with you. Good note.
John, I'm just wondering, there are so many people right now who have to pull their boats out in the middle of August because the lake levels are too low, they can't get to their boat. And we have, you know, I know like along, like where Crescent Beach used to be out that way, you know, west of Lake Charlotte, that there's a terrible problem with erosion.
It is.
I just can't imagine that, you know, I'm just, you always hear about in the spring, the flooding, the flooding, the flooding, but it, for people that don't understand, you know, the river is a great passageway, but to have these lake levels be so up and down, up and down.
That is a great concern.
I just can't believe that it takes forever to lower the lake just a foot because you're letting it out all the way down the river into the ocean.
Again, it is, it is our belief, I mean, it's hard to say, "Well, we know it's hydropower." We can't say that. I mean, the official standing on the recommendation for Plan 2014 is the environmental and ecological impacts. We don't believe it, quite frankly. And I think it's based on not only Dr. Shear Mano's work, we have many others that have contributed to this, but also if you have an outdoor proclivity, and Steve Leroy, the supervisor of Town of Sodas, was a charter captain on Lake Ontario for 27 years, ad bit outdoorsman, abit fisherman, extremely knowledgeable. I'm not too shabby myself in that arena. If you look back and compare it to the 70s to now, you see all manner of wildlife and ecological systems that were damaged heavily those many years ago. All return and are flourishing. Northern Pike is almost to the point of an annoyance fish for the Ontario lake fishing scene. Muskrats are to be seen everywhere and in all the tributaries. The marsh areas are doing extraordinarily well, to the point they're impeding ordinary boat traffic into Braddock Bay and many of the other embayments. So, from a layman's standpoint, I find their argument a little bit shallow.
I do a lot of fishing, mostly between Braddock's Point and a little to the west of Hamlin Beach State Park. That area, unlike Ontario, is a flat area. So a three or four-foot variance in water is going to be devastating-
It is.
-to that entire area. I mean-
It is.
I can't imagine the homes that would be affected.
And it's not, again, as I stated before, it's not just a fight for those, there's a perception, and I say perception, that all those rich homeowners, they'll put up some embankments and they'll be good to go. It's far from the truth because the average property is a handed-down cottage property that has been built up over years and years and multiple generations, and it's a modest property. They simply could barely pay the taxes now, they simply cannot afford to do any type of mitigation, even if it were physically achievable. And the economic impact ripples all through the entire county, not just those towns, not just our school district. The entire county will be paying for that, or that shore damage.
On the bottom line, who actually votes this in?
The, it will come in an official format from the State Department, the United States State Department. But that, that decision, as it will be formally declared, will be crafted on input from the Governor of State of New York and the White House. That's pretty much, as we understand it, where it'll be crafted from.
At this point, are the county supervisors asking for any formal action from school districts?
What we would like the school district consider is, first of all, if you can, educate yourselves a little more. Obviously, this is our viewpoint, and being educators, you want to make sure you understand. And I think if you do, and you have an opportunity to, you'll likely come to the same conclusions. I think it helps, a lot of these things are symbolic, but I think they help a lot. We did a resolution, both in the town and at the county, to oppose this plan and send it to the Governor's Office. I think that if you come to the same conclusion, it certainly couldn't hurt, and it just might be one more nudge of help to consider. And I would look at it from that way, and if you discover more and you feel the same way, a phone call or an email to our representatives would certainly go a long ways as well.
I just want to say, John, I know you haven't been in office very long, but this was a well-documented, well-presented, well-spoken presentation for us, and I'm very impressed.
Well, thank you. I try hard. The, I see, and you know, off-topic a little bit, that you're talking about a new superintendent, a new page, so to speak, for Wayne Central. I am thoroughly committed to the Town of Ontario. This is, I have reached the absolute pinnacle of my mediocrity in my political ambitions. And I enjoy our town, I love our town, I love our community, and I see every opportunity for us as we go forward, as the school identifies your new leadership to work together and achieve common goals. Anything else? Dennis, yes?
Would you be willing to come to our Lions Club and present this?
Sure.
Okay, I'll get ahold of you. I mean, I think that's something that you guys need to do, is start going to all these, the rotaries and the Lions Club.
We have been, in our local sense, we're very blessed because Rotary has a lot of our own people right in it, so the message is out there. Jim Hoffman, our, of course, our Chairman of the Board of Supervisors, as well as the Supervisor of Town of Williamson, has been working tirelessly on this, talking to group after group, and all of the lake shore supervisors have been working hard. And again, I understand why it hasn't caught the public's attention, it's boring, really, on its face, but it has tremendous impact for our communities, tremendous impact. We tend to forget, as residents who live on the South Shore, people travel from the mid-Atlantic and farther to come to Lake Ontario to fish and camp and spend money. They come here. Why are, if the lake is in such peril, why do we have so many darn people coming to visit and fish in our lakes and be part of it? Thanks, and please, feel free to call, whatever you need, we'll be happy to help you out. Thank you for your time tonight, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, John.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Before we move on to our last superintendent report, I was wondering if the board might be interested in a five-minute break, and if not, we might just allow our students to come up and get their papers signed off. All right, we're going to just keep going, but we're going to have the students, well, wait, I heard that from Carl, I didn't hear that from the whole board. I don't want to get in trouble. But I think the students can come up anyway if you want to, you can get a sign off to any board member here, and then this way you guys won't have to hang around too much longer.
Hi. Hello. How are you doing?
Right to the President.
Looks like you're walking without much of a limp. Yeah. You gonna be okay for lacrosse?
Yeah.
You'll gut it out regardless, right? You'll gut it out regardless.
Oh, I know. Thank you.
Okay, pushing on, we're gonna-
Yep, okay, I think we're all set with students. So Joe, I'm going to turn it right over to you, thank you.
Excellent. Tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about special education at Wayne. Special, our special education program is a significant component of our overall educational program here at Wayne. It's a significant part of our budget. Our goal tonight is just to give a brief overview of our, of special education in general and some of the rules that govern it, and then to talk a little bit about our philosophy and a couple of our, in our program here at Wayne.
Special education is defined under IDEA. An IDEA is an abbreviation for Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. An IDEA is a federal law that ensures the rights of children and youth with disabilities and their parents are protected. Just to kind of talk about IDEA's definition, you can see it on the PowerPoint, that is defined as a specially-designed instruction at no cost to the parents to meet the unique needs of a child with a disability. Kind of just to go into that a little bit further, to give you guys some information, specially-designed instruction, it's a customized instructional program to meet the unique needs of the student, so it's individualized, at no cost to the parents. It's free regardless of the student's disability, regardless of the severity of it. It's allowing the children to have a free and appropriate public education. To meet the unique needs of the child, like I said, each child is individually receiving special education services, so each child is different and has different needs. So therefore, when we're dividing and coming up with a plan, each student is individualized. With a disability, the last part is, when we talk about a disability, we talk about it's an inability or a reduced capacity to perform as other children do. So because of some impairment, it can be a physical impairment, it can be a cognitive impairment or other areas of functioning, that's what a disability is. In special education, we take a look at, when we're looking to classify a student for special education services, we take a look at different categories. And categories are broken down based on individuals who share common characteristics and functions. So if you take a look at, under IDEA, we have 13 different categories that we can look to classify a student receiving, to receive special education services. Currently, right now at Wayne Central, not all of our students fall underneath all of these categories. Currently, right now, we don't, we do not have any students that are receiving, that have deaf and blindness or are traumatic brain injuries. The majority of our students that are classified receive services under the other health impairment. And the other health impairment is a chronic or an acute health problem. So for an example, a student may have attention hyper-deficit disorder, which you guys might also known as ADHD. The other health impairment could fall under, also if a student is a diabetic and/or if a student has Tourette's. Those are just examples of some of the classic categories under other health impairment. Thirty-one percent of our students are classified under that category, which is roughly about 89 students. Now, doesn't mean that every student that has attention deficit disorder is going to be classified under this category. They really have to make sure that it has an adverse effect on their academic performance. The second category that the majority of our students fall under, that receive services, are under the category of learning disabilities. You may also hear that as an LD, and that's about 25% of our students fall under there, about 70 students. And in the area of LD, we take a look at, they have an adverse effect on the students in either reading, writing, and math.
So each student who qualifies under one of the 13 categories that Michelle just shared would have an individualized education plan created for them. That plan is created by a multidisciplinary team that consists of teachers, administrators, support staff, psychologists, counselors, anybody who could have a hand in that child in creating the plan to help that child or student be successful in school. Most importantly, parents, and often, quite often, students themselves, especially as students get to the secondary levels, they know what they need and they're a part of the creation of their individualized education plan. It's a collaborative process, but it can also be a difficult process because well-intended adults, well-intended people have best interests of students at heart, might not agree on the best course of action to take. And that's why it's important that the dialogue is open and that the input from multiple stakeholders is taken in. So these individual programs do have a cost to them. If you look at this chart, the top will show Wayne Central students, and the middle chart will show similar schools. So if you look at our expenditures per pupil for general education students, that factors out, that number in particular factors out, special education kids. We spend on average $9,186 per pupil compared to our special education students, for which we spend 32, just over $32,000. We think, you know, part of, part of what this shows is that we back up with our resources what our philosophy is for our kids. We know they can be successful if we put the resource and support behind them, and that comes with a cost. But we don't, we do that because we know they can be successful with proper supports. General education students do also benefit from additional staff. It's not as if, when a special education teacher pushes into a room, the only children they're supporting are the ones with IEPs. So that does have kind of an overflow positive impact on the rest of the classroom often. If you look at similar schools, our general education per pupil allotment is a little bit, little bit below the per pupil allotment of similar schools, and, but our special education allotment is, is $2,000 or $3,000 above the average of other like- If you look at similar schools, our, our, our general education per pupil allotment is a little bit, little bit below the per pupil allotment of similar schools, and, and our, but our special education allotment is, is two or three thousand dollars above the, the average of other like schools in our area.
So our philosophy at Wayne, the least restrictive environment is the law, and what we do is look at our students and see where we can place them, where, the most beneficial placement, so that they will learn the most and be the most successful. Relationships with all our students, we know it's important that our students have a positive relationship in the program they're in, and with their teachers, so that's extremely important to us. And the same goes for our high standards. We expect all our students at, at Wayne to meet a high standard, and we have that same expectation for our special education students, and we know that they can reach that standard if we give them the proper support. So that's something that we are always, always looking at. Along with that least restricted environment, this chart shows you similar districts compared to ours, where they have their students placed, and as you can see, our classification rate at Wayne is lower than it is at similar districts. And it also shows that our students, for the most part, spend the majority of their time in a regular education setting, getting their education, as compared to other districts. While we do look at that least restricted environment, we offer a continuum of programs at Wayne. So starting with a consultant teacher, and that's a teacher who would push into a general education classroom to support students with special needs. We also have resource room teachers, so they pull those special ed kids out to work on specific skills that they may be lacking, or areas of weakness. Then we have some special classrooms. We have a fif, we have fifteen-one-one classes, and those are classes where the students come out for direct instruction, either ELA, math, and I believe we have some in social studies and science as well at the upper levels. So those students are pulled out for direct instruction with a special education teacher. Special class by period is also a more restrictive environment, those are for students, it's a skills-based class, so they're pulled out for special skills for them. And we have six-one-one, too, and these students, it varies based on the student, some of them are pulled out for specific instruction, and others are able to be in the classroom with support, and those teachers go into those classrooms and support our six-one-one students. So we really do have that continuum to make sure that we're supporting every special ed student, and giving them what they need so they can be successful.
In regards to our outer district placement, we only have three students out of district, and that's something that we're very proud of, because we really like to build the relationships with our students, and if they're not here with us on campus, then we're not able to be able to build those relationships, making sure that we have, our philosophy is making sure that we have high expectations for all of our students, and also believing that they all can be successful. There's times here when I make it, get a phone call from Holly over at Ontario Elementary and saying, you know, I'm, I'm really struggling with this, not that she struggles with any of the students, but I kind of need you to come over here and do a tag, and I'm, I'm, need your help. And that is something that go over, we provide the support, we can't do that with our students that are out of district. We, we don't have that luxury to be able to just go over, support our students, get them back into class, and the nice thing about having them here is we can do that. It's not that the, the three students that are out of district, that we didn't try to support them here within our district, we did try to support them, it just was that we, their needs were so significant, that we weren't able to provide them the support and the resources here for them to be successful. And where they are now is, they are being successful.
One of the fortunate things at Wayne, though, is when we look at our kids and we see what they need, and we do try to develop a program, and last year at OE, we had a handful of students who just weren't having their needs met in the placement they were in. So in talking it over, we did develop a twelve-one-one program at Ontario Elementary, and Swell and Terranova is the teacher in that program, so that's new to OE this, this year. And that's a skilled-based program, so each of these students has individual skills that they are working on in the classroom each day with the teachers and aides and support staff in that classroom to meet, they each have an individual learning plan, and they're working on specific skills that they need to move forward in their own learning. We do have some great support people in that classroom, and excellent support staff, so all the kids really have the individual attention that they need on a daily basis to be successful. And the great thing about this program is those students have that individual learning program in that classroom, but they also participate with all their peers in PE, and art, and music, and the lunchroom, so they're really a part of our school, and it's fantastic. And I'll tell you, if, you know, you're welcome to come to OE anytime, but if you do stop in, this is a classroom you want to stop in, and because you can't help but walk out of that classroom with a huge smile on your face. We're doing fantastic things with these kids, and I think they really enjoy being part of our, our school this year, and are really getting their individual needs met, so we're very proud of this program. So I do welcome you to stop in anytime to see this new program at OE.
You have a question? Are some of these students from other districts, so that we get?
Yes, we do have two consortium students in that classroom.
Holly, I just did a quick calculation on my phone, and I think if I did it right, and Greg can probably say, in our school budget, special education is broken down in a separate entity, correct? What is, because I just did it and came up with like over eight million dollars, is, and I would take it that most of that is for personnel to support those students? Is that correct?
Yeah, but it's, our budget for special ed is not that high.
No?
Our budget is about four hundred million dollars.
Oh, because I, I took the thirty-two times the two-hundred-and-fifty-nine kids, but...
A big piece of it, though, is the, the support staff that some of them require. Some of them require individual one-to-one aides, yes.
Right, okay.
We also have, we have two consortium students, we're students from other districts in this program. Michelle, twelve consortium students, district-wide? And what that means is, you know, when we share with you our, our costs, the tuition, if you will, for those consortium students comes into the general budget, so we kind of, we, we recognize the, the cost, or attribute the cost to our kids, which, so, but we, we do get some monies back from area districts that goes back into the, so some, so it might be just very slightly misleading, our per pupil expenditure in special ed, because we, the accounting piece doesn't allot for it, so.
I noticed in our financial reports that we had a, a check from another school for like a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars for one of the, one of the supports that we gave, so I think that's significant.
Well, I just want people to understand that, you know, it is our duty to educate these kids to the best of their ability with the least restrictive environment, and the cost is much more than your average gen ed kid, and it's, it's, it is amazing to see, and the dedication that the one-to-ones have there with those kids, and it is, I see it every day in my building where I am. It is not an easy job, and those, it takes a very special person to do that, and I just commend your special ed staff, because they are in a very tough situation. And the realm, and, and even your gen ed teachers who are doing differentiation to try to meet the kids of your highs and your lows, I have a great respect for that special niche of our staff.
I'd like to, to say also, administratively speaking, from Michelle's office, she will go to the five buildings, at the, you know, she's always going, if there's a crisis or a need, to the five-building principals, to the, to the classroom teachers that you mentioned, can't overstate their, their dedication. But it also, at the building, at the principal level, I think our five-building principals are all extremely inclusive-minded, so that their first instinct when they have a student who is struggling isn't, isn't to look for a different placement, but to figure out how to get this child what they need to stay in the general setting. So it is a, it's kind of a, a cultural thing, inclusion.
The one thing that I have noticed when I was a student here at Wayne Central, kids with special needs were really isolated. They were put somewhere, they were in the building, we knew they were there, but we really didn't see them much, didn't have a lot of interaction, they were kind of segregated almost. And over the years, there's been more and more inclusion. And I notice with today's young people who graduate, and even from here, or any school where they are exposed to kids with special needs, they are so much more comfortable being around a child who is different, or has a disability, whether it's, and they pick up on it right off the bat, and it is, it's, it's something that people in my generation may be a little bit nervous about. They could, they know, oh, that kid, that's an autistic kid, or that's a this kid, or that kid's got ADD, or they work with adults that are now adults with ADD, and they understand it, they've lived it, they've been with these kids, and it isn't anything that they are afraid to jump in and, and meet and greet and do and work with somebody. And I think that is the biggest thing that I have seen as an adult, to watch the progression of inclusion, even in the adult, as they become adults. So, very impressive.
I just, oh, sorry.
Just a point about the cost, I think that state number is gonna include benefits, and our budget, when we talk about the four hundred million dollars, actually, it's the twenty-two fifty codes, which are the staff and supplies and equipment, all our benefits, health insurance, retirement, all those things are in the undistributed part, I'm sure those state numbers take the benefits and include it as part of the school cost, that's why I give it a strength.
Okay. Thanks for clarification. As a lot of people know, I'm a huge supporter of special ed at Wayne, and I think everybody in the program does a fantastic job. I was just thinking, I know that when Mr. LaRouche, when my kids were at OP, and Abel was there, Abel was a huge asset with kids with special needs, to help them calm down when they were having a bad time, get back into class, and I would, you know, if you can find volunteers at OE, I don't know, maybe there already is one, but having, for some reason, having animals there for those kids when they get wound up is extremely beneficial. And I would just, I know it made a huge difference for us, and I would recommend that we encourage people to make use of that.
Do we have other doc therapy people coming in?
We don't at OE right now.
We don't?
We do at the high school. We do at the high school. In the six-one-one program, Bella is down there, and not only is Bella loved by the students in the program, but also by the whole school, and often comes down to the district office at the end of the day and gets a lot of treats by a lot of the adults as well.
Scares the superintendent as well. She kind of walks around like she owns the place.
Michelle, back in the eighties, there was a predominance of one gender in special education, and there also seemed to be a birthday relationship. Do you still find that's true in the, in the kids who get classified, or is it more evenly distributed these days?
It's been pretty evenly distributed these days, yeah. There isn't, before, there used to be more of a significance with males over, you know, females, and then basically also looking at the different categories, too. But not so much anymore.
What is the final drive to put them out of district? What makes your final decision usually there?
Usually, the final decision is that we have exhausted all of our resources, we've brought in outside consultants, other people, it could be to the point that there, we're not able to provide, it could be a psychiatric component of it, it could be we're not able to provide the next, to keep them safe to the next level. But we, our staff, and our teachers, and the principals, we do everything that we can possible to provide the support for our students here in district. And sometimes we just get to that point, and we just know, we, for them to be successful, they have to have a placement that's able to provide their, and meet their needs.
And as this week being staff recognition, I think this group is one that really needs to be recognized, especially with my daughter being one of them.
The, the teachers and the staff, they're, they are phenomenal, they're dedicated, they put time in, they're amazing, you are absolutely right.
I'd like to ask, I remember when I was in school, I remember when I subbed here, how great the program was, and you're talking numbers of kids coming, did we do anything to try to get more of them to come here, from outside districts, to sharing our program just as a monetary bonus for us? Do you, do we, do we actually go seek them out, or how do other districts find out?
Well, I think like a program like this, you talk about it when you meet with your directors from around, you know what I mean? So not every school is able to offer some of the things that we offer, and that's how they find out about it, and then want to send their kids here, instead of sending them farther, maybe towards the city, you know, it's a closer placement for some kids, too.
Okay.
Some of the districts have, have singletons, so they have one student that needs a twelve-one-one program, they don't have the program in their district, so then they'll look to come here to Wayne Central.
Thank you, Joe, Holly, and Michelle. I can also share with the board my, my experience over, over many years, many districts, not only in Wayne County, but Monroe County as well, are chasing this program. This program is, is, is ahead of its time, and talking with several of our Wayne Figure League's BOCs, people who are here tonight even, the, you know, the fact that we pulled, started bringing people back into our program many, many years ago, it's an inclusive program. It, it really is, a lot of districts are still trying to get, to get close there. Several of the districts that I recently worked in, as a matter of fact, so it really is, there's a lot of good things going on with the special ed program. So thank you, guys, as well. I think we're all set with our reports, can we turn it back to you, Ron, for your?
Under Board Business, we have a, a bid for, a BOC cooperative bid for paper. Greg, do you want to just say a few words about what we're doing there?
Yeah, we use the services of BOC for copying paper, and different card stock, and envelopes, things of that nature, and so this is our recommendation. Actually, we're recommending to take the recommendations from BOC's board, you know, like, we're cooperative, we need to price them better because we grew with other districts in Wayne Central.
That's truly a purchase power.
Yes, yes.
Do we work with the towns at all?
Uh, generally, we do not.
Curious, because I know they're getting into that thing now, where they've got to start coming up with a certain percentage of shared services, and this would be the opportunity I would see. And we had that coming, too.
Yes, we do, we do. Could I get a motion to accept the cooperative bid? Matt, could I get a second? Jeremy, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. The next issue is a gift to the district. Unfortunately, a longtime teacher at Wayne Central passed away recently, Bob Brown, his wife has made a gift to the district of a fugal horn. Could I get a motion to that effect? Carla, a second. Dennis, any discussion? All in favor to accept this gift? Any opposed? Could we ask you, Kathy, to send a thank you note to the, to Bob Soedl? The next item is a discussion item. Some of you who, some of you, all of us, with the exception of Pam and Dennis, were on the board last February, when Marla worked with us at a board retreat, and as part of that program, she had us fill out a survey from the New York State School Boards Association on how well we function as a board. Well, we've now been in operation four months, and I thought it might be interesting if we decided as a board to take this same instrument and fill it out today, so that we would have some idea of how you see us operating. This is a discussion item at this point, I, what I'd like to know is whether or not it's the feeling of the board that this would be a useful tool for us to do. Did it help the last time? Let's say I would guess that...
We'll begin, let's take a new start of it, try to get...
I, I think, I think it provided some very valuable feedback at that, at the point it was done last year. Karen was in the process of doing a handbook at the time, and I think it helped her, and I think it certainly helped some of us in, in our operations as board members. So yes, I think it did help, Dennis.
Yeah, I think it, it gave us some starting points to try and identify potential problem areas where either people didn't have the same understanding, or their styles were just different, to try and work through how we could overcome that.
I don't have a problem with filling it out, bring it back, we'll leave it.
Okay, how about the rest of you? How about the rest of you?
I think it's good because, you know, we need to evaluate ourselves in order to improve, so anything we can use, any tools that seem valid, we should use them.
Do you think John, are you going to add anything to that?
Oh, I'd love to participate in that. If you're asking.
It's really not fair because you weren't one.
We did have a conversation with John earlier today and yes, he is going to give us some feedback about our performance as a board and we respect and value his input. So if I could, if I could ask you to take this home with you and then fill it out and bring it to our workshop on the 20th and then we'll ask Kathy to put the results together and we'll share it with the board members. Okay, thank you. Consent agenda. We had a change in the agenda to pull personnel action. Could I get a motion to approve the appointment of Mr. Steinrock as the JV coach? Carla, a second. Matt, any discussion?
I would just like to inform the board and the community that the process that was followed to hire this coach, even though he was related to Tim, was the same process we use for every employment applicant. And this young man had great recommendations and will be a real credit to our organization. So I just wanted to make sure in terms of full disclosure that the community is aware of that. Thank you.
I want to ask because we've had a couple of questions about it. So if I'm to envision the modified wrestling program, correct? We are going to have co-coaches which share the coaching stipend and an assistant coach. Is that...
No, this young man, I believe, is going to be a JV, is a JV coach.
Oh, he's a JV, okay.
But in answer to your question, the modified program is a little bit different. It is a co-coaching situation, which is kind of like a job share. It's very beneficial to us because two coaches are sharing one stipend and will get, I think, better coverage. And they were, again, two candidates that I think would be very supportive of the program. This young man is a JV coach. Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Next, could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Karen, a second. Dennis? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Under Committee Reports, we're going to change the order today. Let's start with the Audit Committee. Matt?
Okay, Kathy, I've got a copy for you for this because it'll look like me. We met on October 30th for about two and a half hours. EFP Rothenberg was on hand to present the district risk assessment, single audit of cash receipts and revenue. We had some discussion regarding the state comptrollers audit. We had some discussion on timing of financial documents availability and we made a decision on the target of the next single audit and that will be food service. The November 13th meeting has been rescheduled. Our next meeting will be held at the Ontario Elementary School on December 4th at 5:30. Therefore, there will be two meetings in December. We will be reviewing and approving corrective action plans for the state comptrollers audit and the single audit of cash receipts and revenue. We'll also look at the corrective action plan for New York State Office, state comptrollers audit for the period of July 2009 to April 2012. And that's it.
Policy Committee, Karen?
We had a meeting today in room 6C across the hall from the cafeteria from 4:00 to 5:00. We reviewed the middle section of the 8,000 section of the policy manual as well as about five other policies that have been pulled individually for review by different board members. We'll have some policies that will be submitted for first reading on December 11th. And you actually, we approved, or we had a first reading of policy 5230 in the consent agenda today. We will continue to work some open items and review the last third of the 8,000 section at our next meeting, which is December 11th at 4:00 PM. And I'll have to be TBD on the room as we figure out where we're moving around.
Thank you. Communications, Jeremy?
We had our November meeting this evening. We want to share that our first community roundtable on the project, or the construction project is the 13th, which is next Thursday, in the Library of the Middle School at 7:00. Our next committee meeting is on the 11th of December to be determined. It'll be at 5:00, but we'll find out where. And we were presented with some good information about how we're getting Wayne Central news out and there was a lot of numbers, so I asked Amy if she could come up because I don't want to butcher the numbers. But I think everybody on the board and it might be good for people in the community to hear, will be excited about the numbers of how many people we're actually reaching. Thank you, Amy.
You're welcome. So on our Facebook page, we currently have 1,300 fans, a little over 1,300 fans. Just this week alone, we have over 24 new page likes and our average reach per post is about 5,400. This is great. I mean, our grandparents' day alone, we had 2,000 hits and we're getting tons of likes. Our page fan base is growing by the week. When I post something, within really two, three minutes, we get 40 notifications that people have seen it and they're sharing our posts. So we're doing really, really well with our Facebook page.
One more thing, we noticed we're like on five continents. Five of seven continents.
Maybe we should talk to John Smith about seeing how we can include him.
Under Board President Comments, I would like to extend condolences to the family of Lisa Simpson. Lisa's a teacher at Freewill and her father passed away within the past month, so condolences to Lisa and her family. And earlier, John mentioned the volleyball team under student recognition. The volleyball, the girls volleyball team got to the finals of sectionals and they did win the sportsmanship award for their class. And in some ways, as a former building principal, I can tell you that winning the sportsmanship award is in many ways a lot more important than whether or not they won the sectional final. So congratulations to those girls. So, thank you. Can I get a motion for German? Matt and Jeremy, a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, folks. Have a nice evening.